October 24th, sorry. Meeting of the Lake Forest Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board is here tonight to work with all of you, property owners, neighbors and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The City of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the Board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available in the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire Board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners and the larger community. So with that, we'll go through introductions. We'll start on my right.
Michael Seaman, Third Ward.
Mark Pasquazy, Fourth Ward.
Lloyd Culbertson, Fourth Ward.
Louis Picas, Second Ward.
Kevin Lewis, Third Ward.
Nancy Novit, First Ward.
Okay. First item on our agenda is consideration of approval of the minutes from the August 22nd, 2016 meeting. They were included in our packets delivered last week. Assuming everybody had a chance to review them, do we have any questions, comments or corrections for staff? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes approved. Next item on the agenda, consideration of requests for a variance from the front yard setback to allow modifications to the driveway at 1155 Fairview Avenue. Owners are John and Jenna Zilka. So first, will I ask any declarations of conflict of interest or ex parte contacts from the Board? Okay, hearing none, then if you're going to provide your presentation, I'll ask you to raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Great.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for joining us today. I'm the only item on the agenda, so I appreciate your time and coming out this evening. My name is John Zilka. This is my wife Jenna Zilka. We've been Lake Forest residents since March 2015, moving back here with our family. We both grew up in this town, from birth with my wife, me at two years old. Lake Forest High School graduates, got married in this town. So we have a very strong connection and background to Lake Forest and the greater community. So the reason for our petition today is for a front yard setback variance. We're requesting this variance to allow modifications to our existing driveway. We're seeking an additional asphalt segment to our current asphalt driveway, which is in need of replacement due to weathered conditions. And this variance is being requested because the majority of this proposed additional segment is within that 30-foot yard setback and would make the driveway approximately 24 feet at its widest point. This is a plat survey of our existing lot with current dimensions and the setback line noted there in the dash. And this is a close-up of our proposed additional segment we would like to add to the eastern and southern part of the existing driveway. This would add approximately 191 additional square feet of asphalt to our driveway. Little bit of background on our house. It is on Fairview Avenue, which is just north of Old Elm Rome, Old Elm Road, just west of Route 41. It's in the Lake Forest Heights subdivision. We live in a two-story residence and we are subject to the R2 zoning district. Couple images of the site. This is the entrance via the driveway to our lot. This is a close-up from the western view of our proposed additional driveway segment. This is the southern view of that segment, standing in our neighbor to the south's property. And this is an eastern view of our, from, to the segment, still on our lot but facing an eastern view. So our rationale behind requesting this variance centers around three main areas, with the first one being, and the primary reason being, a property hardship. We are in the R2 zoning district and, you know, reading the city report, it was noted that this district requires 20,000 square feet and 100 feet of a lot width. Our actual lot is approximately 15,000 square feet. So based on that, it appears that the setback parameters are not necessarily aligned with the actual size of the lot, meaning that because our lot is smaller and the parameters were built off of a larger lot, it's kind of squeezing the amount of room that we have to do proposed work. Secondly, the Fairview Avenue street in particular is very unique. The street runs northwest by southeast, but the houses are not parallel facing that street. They actually face due east and due west. So thus, what's created is a lot of the front yards, or all the front yards on the avenue, have really a short side and a long side to their front yard. It's very angled. In our case, our garage was built on the short side of our front, of our front yard, which is limiting the setback line on our property. With that 30 feet, it almost touches our garage where that line comes in. Had the house been more parallel and aligned with the street, we could kind of assume that no variance might have not been required just because of that different angle to the street. And thirdly, our lot in particular also has a curvature and a sloped driveway. There are certainly other driveways on the street that are, that are curved, but there are no others that are also sloped as well. It's very difficult to maneuver this driveway entering and exiting. We feel there's some basic child safety hazards that this creates, which I'll show in a minute. We feel the additional segment would alleviate some of these maneuverable difficulties that we have. So this is an aerial view of our lot and Fairview Avenue. Our house is noted there with the red dot. As you can tell, when you enter in off of Old Elm, you know, it does go north-south, but then it veers to the left on that angle, which is that, which is that northwest-southeast positioning, but the house does face due west. So as you can see there, there's that additional short side and long side to our front yard. So the house is not facing perpendicular to the street, as noted there. This yellow box is our proposed additional driveway segment in relation from an aerial So this is an image of, of what it may have, might have looked like had the house been aligned in a more parallel fashion to the street. I cropped an image and just kind of played around with it and turned it a little bit. Again, I placed the house in the middle, dead center of the lot, just kind of guessing where it might have been built. But as you can tell, on the southern side, there would be a lot more space and a longer driveway would have been created and thus outside the 30, the 30-foot setback line. So just because of the angledness of our house in relationship to the street, it limits the scope that we can have according to the current setback law. Additional rationale, you know, certainly the additional space allows us some more contemporary functional use. We have three kids. Having that extra driveway space would certainly be beneficial. It would also be extra flat driveway space. About a half of our driveway does slope down into the street. So from a child safety hazard, it's not the most ideal place to have kids, you know, playing with bikes and tricycles and scooters and whatnot. It really cuts off our driveway. So adding this additional space would allow us a more flat area for kids to play in. And secondly, certainly having that additional parking spot as needed is beneficial from a homeowner perspective with, with, you know, tools and lawn care in the, in the garage, having to move out of the way, guests and visitors, an additional parking spot, as well as down the line with future, should we need it, a child parking spot with our intention to stay here through high school and college years of our children. Third rationale, some neighborhood precedent. We understand that the Board considers every property on an individual basis, but we do feel that there were some, some examples on our own street that provided some level of precedent to what we are requesting. So on Fairview, there are six lots that have these additional segments that are somewhat of a car width and length. Three of those do occur on that short side of the front yard, and these two shown here, 1141 Fairview Avenue and 1075 Fairview Avenue, we feel are, are nice representations of what we would seek to do. The house on the left there in red is actually directly to the north of us. We do share the property line with that house. And the house on the right is a little bit more down the street. There is some landscaping there that nicely shields the house that we'd be, that we would look to replicate with our, with our proposal. So moving to that, from a landscaping plan perspective, really three main things. There's an existing maple tree near the eastern half of our segment. We do want to retain that to act, to act as a shield on the eastern side of that segment. We do plan to plant boxwoods or similar bushes that would grow to four to five feet in length along that western, southern section of the driveway segment. And then we also welcome the replanting of a city-owned tree in the parkway that was removed a couple of years ago because of the ashbore disease. I think we do have confirmation from the city that they would replant that. So that would add some nice shielding to the far western part of that side of our yard, shielding the, the segment. Going back to another aerial view here, there's the segment. We also recognize that cars and people entering this street were really the dead center first house they see, you know, coming in off Old Elm. So we recognize the importance of that and, and want to make sure that it is visually appealing, in line with Lake Forest standards from a, from a landscaping perspective. You can see the little opening there where that tree was. So this kind of, you know, serves to, to show where that tree would be. So with the existing maple tree that'll be overhanging the, the additional driveway segment, that additional replanted tree will help on the western side. This image here is a Google Street View from June of 2012. You can see the prior city-owned tree that's visible there. There's a little electrical unit that, that was planted relatively nearby. You can, you can somewhat tell that there's the maple tree in the back. There is another tree, a third tree there that hugs the driveway. That tree was since removed when we, when we owned the house due to the disease of the trees. We're not suggesting replanting that, but the purpose of this picture is to give you an idea of with that additional landscape and the protection and the shading that comes to this area. And lastly, this is a picture from that street, referring to what I was talking about, how when you enter the street from Old Elm, this is really the first property you see from a straight-ahead perspective. So just bear with me here, you know, just kind of trying to drill home where that tree could go, then our intention to kind of shield off that spot through the landscaping we want to add to it. So in terms of according to the code, the standards of variance, you know, item number one, we don't feel this will change the essential character of the property. We feel it would actually enhance it and actually make Fairview Avenue in general a more appealing street to turn into with the, with that additional landscaping. Number two, it's, it's unique to our property, from the angled street to the curved driveway. All those factors we feel are very unique to just our property. Number three, we, nothing that we've had is, has been caused by this chapter or something that we've created. We feel we have that. And number four, we do not feel it will endanger the street, fire, public safety. We actually feel it will actually increase property values with the better landscaping turning down the street. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next we'll move to identification of issues by staff.
Thank you, Chairman Picas. The petition before the Board this evening is a request for modifications to the existing driveway to expand it up to 24 feet in width within the front yard setback. As the petitioner noted, the property is part of the Lake Forest Heights subdivision, which was approved in 1924. And although this area is zoned R2, it does not follow the traditional R2 zoning setbacks, but rather special approved setbacks for the subdivision, which is why this is a variance from a 30-foot front yard setback. The property does not meet the minimum lot size and is just under the minimum lot width in the R2 district. Fairview Avenue, as the petitioner noted, is angled and creates a very limited front yard and constricts the area, areas that are allowed for driveways in certain circumstances as the homes were placed on the various properties. In this particular case, the garage actually sits to the nearest point on the street, creating further complications in making any driveway adjustments to accommodate the family. One area of consideration for the Board that was called out in one of the conditions of approval and for you to consider tonight is whether the driveway should be pulled back east towards the residence. Right now, they have an existing sidewalk that runs, that they could pull the driveway over, and then there's still a planting area within there. So depending on what you look at, they could gain maybe five to six feet pulling that driveway back towards the house to the east and minimizing the impact into the front yard setback. In your packet, you'll find findings in support of the variance requested to allow the driveway to be widened up to 24 feet within the front yard setback. As I just mentioned, the, two conditions of approval, one of which for your consideration is to move the driveway towards the east, and the second is for the petitioner to work with the city arborist to refine the screening that will be provided from the south and from the west, both from people entering Fairview Avenue, but also from the neighbor immediately to the south. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, next item is questions or requests of clarification from Board to petitioner or to staff.
I would have a question for the petitioner, if you... What did you think of staff's suggestion of moving the driveway a little further to the east? Is that something you could live with?
Yeah, me and, we, me and my wife have talked about that. It's, it's tricky. We feel that if it was moved all the way flush to the garage, in, in practicality, we feel that a car that were to park in that spot would not always bring their car all the way flush to the garage, just out of not wanting to block that sideways to the backyard. So we feel that a car would actually park, you know, actually in the proposed area anyways. And thus, if we moved that segment to the east flush to the garage, we're now, we're now losing that additional five to six feet to back, back out. We don't feel that a car would, in practicality, actually come all the way flush to the garage if they were to use that space. Yeah, plus the trickiness of the curvature of the, of the driveway itself. It's a very, you have to have some skill to kind of make the C exit from the driveway, and especially so if there's additional cars parked in the driveway.
What you're thinking about the planting area, there's, there's two components of that distance that we're talking about, or that staff's talking about. The sidewalk and a planting area, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, yeah, we, yeah, we are, we are open to both of those. So we, we understand to shield from the cars entering Fairview, shielding appropriately in the spots that we suggested.
I'm sorry, this is, my question pertains to moving the, this, this proposed added section of driveway further to the east. The spade, the five or six feet that I think staff is mentioning is composed of both a sidewalk section and a planted section.
Correct.
On the west side of the house.
Correct.
Right. I understand your, your, your thoughts on the sidewalk section, but what about the planting section? Is that something you could lose?
I mean, good. The negative to that is, right now, when you decorate, sort of when you decorate, then it becomes totally uneven, because now you can't do anything on the right or left of the garage. So like when I do our Christmas decorations or Halloween decorations, or I have a cornstalk there and mums and I have it all pretty, and I lose that, and now, it's, I don't know if we can pull the picture. I, that's what it means to get that driveway, that's why. But I think it would actually be less appealing, usually, to lose that thin section up there.
Okay.
And you could consider just pulling it to the length of the sidewalk and leaving the planting bed, the mulched area that's there now. That's an option for you to consider as well.
I'm not sure I can answer.
So the driveway would...
So the driveway would start from...
So the driveway would start on the, on the side of the sidewalk instead of extending the driveway all the way up to the sidewalk? I'm not clear on this.
The city's suggestion was to essentially take that segment you see staked out there and, and pull it, all of it, and move it closer to the house. So eliminate the first part of that sidewalk.
Oh, I see.
And then eliminate the flower, like where that rock is and the downspout. Pull that whole, hold that whole space flush to our garage.
Okay, sorry. I did drive by, and your decorations are really cute.
So I have a question for staff regarding this. What's the purpose of the suggestion, I guess I'll say, about pulling the, pulling it closer?
The purpose is just to consider minimizing the, the setback variance and how much of that wider driveway is within the front yard setback. The Board can certainly choose to approve it as presented by the petitioner or in some modified fashion, as staff suggested. It's just something for consideration.
Okay. I just didn't know if there was something that you saw that, that I'm missing to say it would work better or be better. You're just, you're just trying to minimize the impact in the front yard.
Minimize the impact to the front yard.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
I have another question, if I may.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
What's the status of the maple tree that could either remain or, as the staff report indicated, could be removed?
The city arborist did look at the maple tree, and he said it can be removed. He would support the removal because it does have a weakened system to it. It kind of splits, I think, at about four feet. And he would support removal of it. If, I, I mentioned to him this last week that the petitioners were proposing, as we reviewed the landscape plan, proposing to keep it, and he said they could, they could work with it. He did have concerns because the root system is pretty flush with the ground in some of that area, and that may be problematic, and they may find that they need to take that out. And he said he could work with them in either case. And that's, in part, how the second condition of approval was to work with the city arborist to kind of develop that plan and having some conversations and seeing what works best for everyone. But we could go either way with that maple tree.
So I, I guess I'd ask the petitioner, do you have any problem with landscaping the, I guess that's the south and, south side of the walkway and driveway?
No, we do not. No, we have no issue with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding the side yard setbacks. I realize they're not part of necessarily where this encroachment is, but as it relates to getting close to the neighbor's property, is, is staff, are we, are we in an issue where we're getting close to the side yard in, in lining up with that walk with any encroachment? And, and then kind of as a corollary to that question is, the petitioner had mentioned that there were three properties on the street that seemed to be in the, the same situation therein. Is there a precedence that the city has put forth in this sort of scenario? Are those cases actually very similar to this in the sense that they, they either needed to or received a variance?
No, so I, staff did review various addresses on the block, and as you drive the street, it does appear that some of them may encroach into the 30-foot setback. Some of them do not actually encroach. They are behind the 30-foot setback. Just in the way that the house is angled and the street is angled, it appears different. Secondly, some, some homes, we couldn't confirm how the driveway arrived to the state it exists in today. And then to address the second question about the side yard setback, there isn't a concern there.
There is not?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any other questions for staff or petitioner? Okay, public testimony, we're not going to have any of that, so opportunity for cross-examination, we won't have that. So final questions from Board to petitioner or staff. Final questions.
I have one question. If we move the driveway, that five feet up, if we go with staff recommendation and move it up, where is the, the dip in your driveway where you stop having it be flat? Would you lose the expanded flat spot as a result, so it would reduce the play area that you envision having for your children if the driveway is shifted up to the drive, up to the garage?
No, we won't lose the flat spot because that, that image there from, from where the stakeout is to our house is the flat area.
But if we move the, if we move the whole improvement towards the garage, you're going to lose the five feet.
Of flat down there, correct, yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, that would limit the overall space of flatness.
Overall play space that you're trying to create by expanding the driveway.
Correct, yes, it would, it would limit that, yes.
Okay.
The other concern is, you show the curve. Or when you see this, you would never think that this would be a hard driveway to pull in. My in-laws are not here, neither are my parents, but for some reason, they haven't been here. So therefore, if someone parks anywhere where the beginning of those stakes are, is about where a gas would pull in, a car cannot get out if it's in the, in the garage. A car cannot get out without dragging onto the garage.
And so again, moving it further up would minimize the ease with which
Right.
you envision being able to manipulate cars in and out of the driveway.
Right there.
Okay.
And even I hit that stake with me. And, so that's another thing, because that curve doesn't necessarily seem like a big deal, but for some reason, that's why you rather run parts anymore.
Any other questions? Okay, any petition rebuttal, any other final comments that you'd like to make? No? Okay. Any additional comments from staff? Okay. All right, discussion. Who do you want to start?
I think it was a very thorough and well-done proposal. I like the way it lays out now. I would be inclined to approve this, subject to working with the, the city for appropriate
Agreed. I feel the exact same way. And kudos on a well-done presentation, thorough and addressed all the issues, in my opinion.
I concur with that. It was great presentation, and I think this situation warrants a variance.
I, Nancy, go ahead.
I'm, I'm in support of what you want to do. I think that extra five feet will make a tremendous difference, having wrestled with a hilly driveway and things rolling out into the street all the time.
Lloyd, any comments?
Well, I like the idea of that little garden section because it adds a visual to where cars pulling into that space would know to stop. I, I think from time to time, it's, the sidewalk will be parked on, but I like the, the visual aspect of that garden section being retained, so.
Yeah, I do too. I, I think it's, I think it's good the way it is, having the planting section, having the sidewalk there. There's continuity there when it kind of returns to, comes around, takes a right angle and returns to the driveway like that, rather than just dead ending into asphalt there on the, at the corner. So I, I kind of like the way they have it presented as is. I think it looks good. Okay, any other comments or thoughts? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve this petition?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we, I move that we recommend approval of this petition to City Council as presented by the petitioner, but subject to a final landscape planned that is approved by the city arborist that would provide further landscaping on the south and west sides of the project.
Very good. We have a second for that.
Second.
Very good. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, petition approved. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the opportunity for public to address the Zoning Board of Appeals on matters not on the agenda. Okay, hearing none. Additional information from staff, who I must apologize that I did not introduce you this evening, I'm sorry. Of course, we have Michelle Frederick and we have Kathy Serniak from the city representing. My apologies.
We will...
We will, as we discussed earlier, we will poll you for, given the holidays coming up, we may look at a zoning board meeting that's a little bit later than the normal November meeting date, which is the Monday after Thanksgiving, but before the regularly scheduled December meeting date. So we may look for something in early November, which would give a little bit more time for petitions to come in.
Early December.
Early December.
Early December. What did I say?
Early November.
Okay. So we'll be in touch with you on confirming a date.
Very good. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, motion to adjourn? Do we hear one?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.